Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Wednesday morning, January 30th, business meeting of the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners. I'm calling the meeting order now. Commissioner DeBoe is not with us this morning, had another commitment, so it'll be just Commissioner and I. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, so please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So the next order of business for our business meetings is citizen input, and we've had a lot of requests to speak this morning, one with regard to the proposed, referred to as the Second Amendment Sanctuary Ordinance, and another group interested in the Terrebonne refinement plan and what's going on there. As a general rule, we appreciate all of you coming. We have some meetings where no one comes and talks about anything, and so this is a good way for you to communicate directly with us. I thought I might give a little background because we're aware that a lot of people are very concerned about both gun rights, the Second Amendment, and gun ordinances. We've gotten a lot of emails as commissioners. We've heard about this. So you know, and a lot of you have read the bulletin, at this point, all that we've done as a commission really was we heard someone like one of you propose that we look at an ordinance. My perspective, and Commissioner Derek can share hers also, was that there's a lot of concern in Oregon with regard to gun rights, obviously, and violence generally, and there's a lot of concern with some measures that have been proposed in Salem, in the legislature. We haven't taken any action or scheduled any real discussion of it. Our county council's been gone for a couple days, and he'd given us an update on what was passed a few years ago when something like this came up, which was basically an ordinance that wasn't transferring or allocating authority to anyone, it was just saying we support the Second Amendment. I've sent a memo to him, basically asking that in large of the, in view of the large outreach from people on this ordinance, could we get a summary of federal and state regulations that currently affect gun ownership and possession in Oregon, and if any, specific Deschutes County ordinances? And he has got that this morning, but we haven't gotten anything further with that. I'm aware as a commissioner that a step where one jurisdiction of government says they're not going to uphold or follow through with what another jurisdiction of government passes is a serious matter. It has been in our country's history for over 200 years. There's been times when states have started to secede or nullified federal law. It's been a big issue, and so it's not something that would be taken lightly, at least by me as a commissioner. Commissioner Derek, do you want to say any opening statements or any thoughts about this?
No, we have gotten, you know, a lot of response, and I have tried to actually call people back and say, you know, I appreciate people reaching out and telling us how they feel because I know it's a serious issue. No one likes to send their children to school in the morning and worry about them. But our position as commissioners, really, we, as I had said initially, we needed to speak to our legal counsel, and what David said to us was that we lack legal authority. But I know now he's going to do deeper research. So, but thank you for being here this morning.
So what we do with public input is basically take input, or you turn in a blue sheet, if you wanted to speak and haven't turned one in, they're right over here on the table, and you turn them into Sharon over here, and she'll get it to us. Since there's two kind of groups, I think I'm going to start with the ones with regard to Terrebonne because it's a smaller number, and those people may not want to stay for the whole hearing or the whole input, and then we'll go through the other as well. So testimony and the public comment, we ask that you restrict it to three minutes so that everybody can be heard, and if you choose to testify at another time, this isn't something we're going to do, I don't believe, and I can't speak for all the commissioners, but I would guess we're not going to do this, you know, without public input or some kind of public process. So if we do have a discussion about it, it'll be an agenda item, you know, either in a work session or a business meeting like this. So first would be Kathy Claire, and second would be Jan Fuller. And you'll come up here and then say your name for the record because this is being recorded. This is also televised, if you're not aware of that, that you're televised when you're testifying, or we're televised when we're talking, so anyway, go ahead.
My name is Kathy Claire. I'm here to hopefully share additional information to you. You will receive numerous papers, some from ODOT, some from community organizations on pros and cons of the highway. So you've got that stuff. What you don't have so much is the fact that I still work, and this will affect my commute. This will affect my pocketbook. This affects the ability for the woman who gave me my mammogram this year to get her children across the highway to go to school. It will affect my masseuse's children, the doctor's children, who will be coming out of Crooked River Ranch. So this isn't simply two sets of papers with pros and cons, there are human beings. I'm a member of the Smith Rock neighborhood, but I'm more involved in a member of the Terrebonne community. Yes, we're not incorporated. We're still a community, and we've been there a long time, and we've set forth to everyone in the county that we're there, we don't want to be incorporated. We're sort of still a bit of the Wild West. And so I think what happened is someone in Salem got stuck in the traffic after visiting Smith Rock, whether they did it on a busy weekend or they did it when the pumpkin patch was in full swing, and they couldn't get on the road. So they thought they'd be generous, they went back to Salem, they submitted a bill, and they got $20 million. Now, if the roof on your house fails, you certainly don't go borrow $20 million first and then find out how much it's going to cost to replace your roof. You do the research first, then you go back and you try and figure out the finances. So I say thank you very much to the person who decided to give us $20 million. ODOT then descended on us like rockchucks. We had at the first meeting a wild group of people that didn't know what was going on. They didn't expect such a good response from the community because they didn't think it was a community. They thought it was a hole in the wall and no one was going to attend. They've had numerous meetings, so I've got two meetings that I want to share with you. The last one was the most recent meeting where I got there late, and that provides you an opportunity to really ask questions and get responses. And I said, "How much are these two plans that you focused on going to cost?" And they said each one came in at $25 million. I said, "Excuse me, what's your budget?" "Yes, our budget is only $20 million, that's all we have, but we can take shortcuts." Do you really want the guy who's repairing your roof telling you that he can take shortcuts? The shortcuts he can take is that they will not take entire pieces of land, they will only take portions. Do you want to be the person on 11th Street who has a house, who's lived there for 50 years, who now has a major highway in their front door because they're taking shortcuts? And they're not going to take the entire property because they need to save money?
Excuse me a second.
Are we past the three minutes?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we're past the three minutes.
I'm very sorry.
You're the leadoff. I don't want to get a, start off with all five minutes, we'll be, so anyway, yeah, so...
No, 11th Street is the heart of our community. If you take that away, you take away people's front lawns, you take away the parking on Friday night so people can get into the pump house, you take away the businesses, you take away their septic systems, you take away the car show, which is a community event. Please don't just read the papers. Know that we're people. Send the money back till they can do it right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, maybe.
Or I can...
Yeah, thanks. Next is Jan Fuller, and then, we're going to set a timer because we've got about, it looks like about 25 people that want to testify today, so go ahead.
Jan Fuller?
Yep.
And did you need my address too?
No, we've got that on your form.
I'll be quick. I'll, two minutes, maybe. I attended a couple of the Terrebonne meetings, and as far as what I see happening is on the transportation, you're taking a four lane to a two lane to a four lane to a two lane to a four lane, trying to fix a problem that, I don't know if that's the way to fix it, is you're just narrowing and widening and narrowing. My priority, I see, is how to improve the safety and access at Lower Bridge, not disrupting Terrebonne as a community. As Kathy was saying, 11th Street is really the community street. That is how folks that are not getting on the highway are doing their business, going chopping, going to the post office, hardware store, et cetera. So if you take away 11th Street and make it a northbound two lane, you're going to have semis and a lot of traffic, and really disruptive to a small community. So I'm opposed to the plan of two lanes south, two lanes north, going through our small community that really is going to be disruptive.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Jan.
Next is Phil Grillo, and then Louise Alenes.
Good morning, commissioners, I'm Phil Grillo, and I guess I should introduce myself a little bit and keep my comments brief. I was the author of the white paper that you received. I know that you've got the electronic copy, I brought some extra hard copies if you'd like to look at them. I'll pass them over to the recording side. I just want to stress that in addition to being a land use attorney and land use planner, I also have a home in the area off of Lower Bridge, so I've been a member of the community for a long time and have a kind of warm spot in my heart for Terrebonne and, you know, the immediate area. What I've tried to do in behalf of Jeff Jordan and the Save Terrebonne Coalition is certainly try and help organize the community to be focused, but I think that the comments that you're hearing this morning, and that I'm sure that you'll continue to hear, are really the, probably the most important comments, which are the local comments of folks who really are there day in, day out. But I see there as an opportunity to look for solutions, and I think that's the other role that I play, is to try and work with ODOT. We're also going to be obtaining independent traffic engineers to help us refine the Safe Terrebonne Plan to be sure that it is feasible, buildable. So I want to be able to serve as a point person and reference to the extent that that's helpful for you. Ultimately, you're going to be the decision makers at the local level, and we appreciate that. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but in deference to your time, I'll go ahead and conclude, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. And Louise?
Good morning, commissioners, I've been in front of you before. My name is Louis Alenes, and I'm a Terrebonne resident. I don't, I won't go into the white paper that Mr. Grillo very well put together. I think all the arguments are there. I just want to make a brief point. I see myself as a resident of Terrebonne and Deschutes County, as someone who wants to protect the resources we have. I see Terrebonne as an entry into central Oregon, Deschutes County, from the north. It really is kind of the gateway into this beautiful setting that we have, whether it's coming to Smith Rock, or whether it's coming to Ski the Mountain, or whether it's coming to Spent Time in Bend. And so I just want to maybe say that we should be very careful on shortchanging plans that will affect this entry into our county from the north, and so we should really be considerate on how this plan that ODOT has will affect not only Terrebonne as a community, and it will absolutely destroy the business district in Terrebonne, but also affect this gateway into this beautiful place that we reside in. And so I agree with Phil Grillo and the Save Terrebonne Coalition. I think this plan is shortsighted by ODOT. ODOT is a big organization, they have a lot of things to do. I'm not sure they've considered how much it will affect the community, and I'm not sure if they're totally in tune with the long-term ramifications of what will happen when you do this, when you put, basically destroy the center of Terrebonne. So thank you for your time, and I know that the commissioners will look closely at this white paper and look at this more closely for the benefit not only of Terrebonne and the residents in Terrebonne, but also just central Oregon as a whole and Deschutes County as a whole. Thank you for your time.
Great.
Thank you, Louise.
So we're going to go on to testify with regard to the, or probably comment on the, with regard to the gun ordinance, the first speaker, Melanie Keebler, and then Sarah Douglas after that.
Good morning, my name is Melanie Keebler, I'm a Bend resident. I'm an attorney, I'm going to give you a little bit of my background so you know where I'm coming from. I've been an attorney since 2008. My entire career I have worked with victims of domestic violence, first for about five years as a prosecutor, not in this county but in other counties, and now for the past five years or so as a victims' rights attorney, also working in criminal court. I did send an email about this ordinance, and I wanted to thank Commissioner DeBoe, who's not here, for replying to my email, and also disclaim that these comments are from me personally and not from the organization that I work for. I think the ordinance that's been handed to the commission is completely overbroad, likely illegal, may not stand up to a legal challenge, and could possibly open the county to liability and lawsuits. I also believe it would make our community less safe, not more safe. And, you know, personally, to my experience, I think it would severely impact the safety of victims of domestic violence in our community. I think people maybe don't realize how much resources and kind of ties to state and federal gun laws our county already has. Judges, people in the DA's office, law enforcement, the sheriff's office, every day, part of their work is working under this framework of legal, state, and federal gun laws, and especially for domestic violence, that involves dispossessing abusers of guns, whether it's because they are subject to a restraining order, or they have been convicted of a felony, or they've been convicted of a misdemeanor crime of domestic violence. So if this county passes an ordinance saying that no county resources can go to uphold any of those laws, I think that people need to realize what a major hit that's going to be to sheriff's office, the district attorney, our county judges, because that's part of their everyday work. You know, a judge signing a restraining order, taking guns away from someone under federal and state laws, it just would be baffling to me if the county said that no resources could go towards that effort. And I also wanted to make a comment that this ordinance is basically a rewrite of an ordinance that was attempted to be placed on the ballot, not enough signatures were gathered. That is a public process where the public was asked about it, and our public here rejected it and did not want to vote on it. And so I think it's something else the commission should consider, that you not take up something that has basically already been rejected by our community. So I really hope that, you know, you, obviously you'll confer with your legal counsel, but I hope that this commission will not take up that ordinance and not consider it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Douglas, and Ruth Herbert?
Hi, thank you so much for your time today. My name is Sarah Douglas, and I live at 64846 Cassacourt in Bend, just a few hundred yards from where my neighbor Valerie Peterson was killed on January 16th by another neighbor, Joanna Kasner. I'm here just to urge you to please fulfill your oath of office and support state gun violence prevention laws. Please don't consider passing the Second Amendment Sanctuary Ordinance, which would nullify these potentially life-saving laws in Deschutes County. Instead, we look, we should be focusing our efforts on how citizens can use the current laws to better protect themselves. I'd like specifically to draw your particular attention to the importance of the Extreme Risk Protection Order. It's called ERPO for short. The Extreme Risk Protection Order law was passed last year in Oregon, and the question I keep asking myself in the last two weeks is if Joanna Kasner's husband had been granted one, would my neighbor Valerie still be here with me today? The Extreme Risk Protection Order is a court order that prevents a person who is at risk of hurting another person or of committing suicide from having or getting deadly weapons, including firearms. Respondents who are subject to these orders must give their weapons to law enforcement agencies, a gun dealer, or someone else who can lawfully hold them for 24 hours. Any family member, household member, or intimate partner can apply for an ERPO. Law enforcement officers are also able to apply. A judge will decide if respondent is at risk in the near future of committing suicide or of harming another person, and the judge will consider any information that is reliable, including the statement by the responder, a respondent. If granted by judges and enforced by law enforcement agencies, these orders could potentially prevent school shootings, suicides, and other tragedies that happen when an unstable person with firearms makes threats against others, as happened in my neighborhood. Please do not consider any ordinance that would prevent me, my neighbors, or our community from protecting ourselves. Additionally, I urge you to ensure that county law enforcement is aware of the ERPO law and informing citizens who express concern for their safety due to threats of violence about this potentially life-saving protective order. In closing, I'd just like to say that it is the job of the judicial branch of our government to decide about the constitutionality of established law. I believe this ordinance, which would allow the county to make these determinations, would be a waste of our public resources, as it would subject the county to costly litigation when the ordinance is, you know, almost certainly challenged in court. Thank you very much for your time today, appreciate you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Ruth Herbert, and then Jerry Hauser.
Hi, I'm Ruth Herbert, I'm a retired respectician from Redmond, and I'm here to encourage you not to adopt this ordinance. Since Sandy Hook and the massacre of our children, I've been dismayed at the gun violence prevalence in this nation. In fact, in early February, in the United States, we'll have had more deaths by gunshot than any other peer nation in the world in an entire year. So when Mr. Robison submitted the proposal, I was really shocked and alarmed, to say the least. He specifically said in his testimony, although I've not been able to actually read the ordinance in the minute yet, that all gun laws would be, it would be illegal to enforce gun laws or use any resources to enforce any gun laws in the community, including background checks. But basically, I think everyone needs to step back a little bit from the basic premise that a lot of people are operating on or afraid of regarding the Second Amendment. We all, we all support the Second Amendment, and indeed, the Supreme Court has interpreted the Second Amendment in that we have the right to keep and bear arms. But in the decision, in the Heller decision in 2008, which was where they reviewed the Second Amendment and gave us the right to have guns in our homes for the purpose of self-defense, it does not preclude regulation. So there isn't a conflict. We can have a Second Amendment, we can, we're a gun-toten community, and that's not going to go away, but we can have protections, they're not mutually exclusive. Specifically, it says in the Heller decision of 2008, "Like most rights, the Second Amendment right is not unlimited. It's not a right to keep and carry any weapon whatsoever, in any manner whatsoever, and for whatever purpose." This was written by Justice Scalia, who's one of the most conservative justices to ever sit on the court. And it's right in the document, you can get the document from the court, this is, I have a copy if you want. Further, it says that "The court opinion should not be taken to cast doubt on longstanding prohibitions on the possession of firearms by felons and the mentally ill, or laws forbidding the carrying of firearms in sensitive places such as schools and government buildings, or laws imposing conditions and qualifications on the commercial sale of arms, and further prevents the sale of dangerous or unusual weapons." So we're not in conflict. We can have laws, uh-oh, sorry, I urge you to not adopt this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ruth.
Jerry Hauser, and then Xandra Brant? Either one works.
Hi, Tom. Good morning, my name is Jerry Hauser, and I'm a board member of the Legal Women Voters of Deschutes County. I was also an employee here for many years at the county. The Legal Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization encouraging informed and active participation in government. The Legal Women Voters takes action on issue only when we have a position addressing that particular issue. Members must study and come to consensus on an issue in order to form a position. The League will be 100 years old in 2020, so there's an enormous amount of experience backing our positions, so 100 years next year. The following is our national position on gun safety. The Legal Women Voters of the United States believes that the proliferation of handguns and semi-automatic assault weapons in the United States is a major health and safety threat to its citizens. The League supports strong federal measures to limit the accessibility and regulate the ownership of these weapons by private citizens. The League supports regulating firearms for consumer safety. The League supports licensing procedures for gun ownership by private citizens to include a waiting period for background checks, personal identity verification, gun safety education, and annual license renewal. The license fees should be adequate to bear the cost of education and verification. The League supports a ban on Saturday night specials, enforcement of strict penalties for the improper possession of and crimes committed with handguns and assault weapons, and allocation of resources to better regulate and monitor gun dealers. The League strongly urges you not to consider passing this ordinance presented by Jared Robison that nullifies reasonable gun safety regulations. The consequences are unknown and will not make it safer for Deschutes County families. Interpreting the Constitution is not the job of our local sheriff or county commissioners. It is your job to uphold the laws, not abolish them, so thank you for listening to our concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Xandra Brant, and then Foster Fell.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Xandra Brant, and I'm here to please deny the request to adopt the Second Amendment Sanctuary Ordinance. If enacted, it would require Deschutes County to disallow and not enforce firearms laws. If the commissioners decide instead to send a message to Salem, you would be telling Deschutes County residents that you are not committed to our constitutional protections from dangerous people who should be prevented from gaining access to and using firearms and firearms accessories. The state chapters of the Oregon Three Percenters and Oath Keepers, part of the Pacific Patriot Network, helped write and drum up support for this measure. Both are militia groups that support armed resistance against perceived threats by the federal and state government to infringe on their constitutional rights. State law requires all gun legislation to be made at the state level. However, supporters of the ordinance would see it as a legitimately enforceable county measure. That would nullify state, federal firearms laws in our county. When Jared Robison appeared before you, he recommended that you actually enforce the ordinance. Are you willing to allow the Oregon militia to dictate your message? The SASSO would disallow many firearms laws, including background check requirements. It would prevent citizens from initiating the Extreme Risk Protection Order and more. The county's risk management and legal departments would have to respond to any violence rising out of disallowing state and federal laws. The sheriff would be put into a liability risk too, I imagine. Are you willing to risk this? I am asking the commissioners to not pass this ordinance. We, the people of Deschutes County, should not be subjected to the minority hard-right-wing group's agenda. group's agenda. The majority of us need to be represented by you. Please deny their request. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Foster Fell, and then, I think, James Foster.
Two Fosters. I'm Foster Fell, resident of Bend, co-owner of the downtown Bend business. I empathize, from personal experience, I can empathize with Mr. Robison. I've tried myself to circulate initiative petitions. I know it's a very difficult task. I don't know whether he has any idea of the unintended consequences of this. I think he has a tiger by the tail. For one thing, I think it would damage Deschutes County's reputation. As Xandra just mentioned, this isn't just a locally conceived effort. If you enact this ordinance, Deschutes County will be seen as buying into the so-called National Constitutional Sheriff Movement. It's a national scourge, supported by the likes of Alex Jones and Joe Arpaio and others who are steeped in an anti-immigrant, racist, anti-Semitic, and misogynistic worldview. Also, it will drain our public coffers. It will take tens of thousands of dollars from our taxpaying constituents to defend it against inevitable challenges to its constitutionality. And finally, it will compromise and endanger public safety. It targets the nullification of the Oregon Firearms Safety Act and its hard-won provisions that require background checks and protect domestic violence victims. So on three counts, the reputation of the county, the protection of our budget, and protecting public safety, I think this ordinance should not be enacted. Thank you.
Thank you, Foster.
Thank you, Foster.
James Foster, and then Susan Cobb.
Greetings, folks. Thank you for the time. I'm another Foster, James Foster. I'm a professor emeritus of political science at OSU Cascades, been teaching political science for about 30 years. I have three short points I want to make very briefly. First of all, the Second Amendment is not fixed. It is changeable. Secondly, the Second Amendment is not absolute, as has already been pointed out in previous public statements. And third, there are ways to change the Second Amendment, and then there are ways to change the Second Amendment. When I was on the faculty at OSU Cascades, I used to teach a class called Guns in the Constitution. Very boring, non-controversial class. I'd ask students to go down to Wall and Bond and do a very decidedly unscientific, random survey that asks people on the street one question: Does the Second Amendment guarantee an individual's right to keep and bear arms? I had to stop doing that in 2008, because in 2008, the Supreme Court of the United States, as has already been pointed out, in D.C. versus Heller, reread the Second Amendment to make it from a, take it from a dependent clause on a well-ordered militia to an individual right. And from that decision in 2008 flows an individual right to keep and bear arms for self-protection in our homes. So the Second Amendment is fungible, if I can use that word. It's changeable. It is not chiseled in stone. It can change over time, as the Heller decision indicates. Secondly, it's not absolute. As one of my colleagues wrote, read at length from the Heller decision, Justice Scalia made a very important point, and that is that the Second Amendment does not guarantee an absolute right. We are all aware of Oliver Wendell Holmes' classic example of the First Amendment not being absolute. You may not go into a crowded theater and falsely shout "fire." That's not protected speech. The Second Amendment does not protect all kinds of esoteric or unconventional arms from being regulated by the government. It is not absolute. It is, like all other rights, capable of being regulated. Finally, the Second Amendment has lots of echoes, if I can put it that way. The Second Amendment creates a possibility for political debate and political discussion, and the ordinance has been suggested here for Deschutes County would short-circuit that conversation and short-circuit that debate. I'm sure your county council will point out that there are jurisdictional issues. There are also political concerns. If people oppose legislation that has been adopted by the legislature in Salem, they should go to Salem and engage in the political process and discuss that and debate it and see what happens as a result of the legislative process. So for all those reasons, I think that you need to think long and hard about the possibility of adopting this proposed legislation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Cobb, and Amber Hasek after that.
Good morning. I'm Susan Cobb. Thank you for giving us the time to speak with you. I'm actually representing a friend of mine, Joshua Berger, who couldn't be here today, and I totally agree with his statements, and I have proof in an email that he wanted me to read this. I'm hoping that's okay with you if I read this statement from him.
Sure.
He did send it in an email, and I did provide copies. "Greetings, Deschutes County Commissioners. My understanding, after reading the article from Bend Bulletin, is that an ordinance is currently under consideration by the county to opt out of enforcing state and federal gun violence prevention laws, thereby nullifying them in Deschutes County. If enacted, the county could decide not to enforce background checks, red flag laws, and other life-saving legislation. The new proposed ordinance lacks the requirement that a sheriff determine which laws are acceptable, which is included in recently passed ordinances in other Oregon counties. Instead, it broadly defines local, state, and federal gun control legislation as extraterritorial acts. This is unacceptable. I am not sure what the problem this ordinance is trying to solve. Please let me know. I am open-minded and, of course, support all constitutional rights, from the Second Amendment to the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. On the surface, I think this ordinance would drastically impinge on my constitutional rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. How can I have those things when my kids are doing active shooter drills in our schools? Violence is at an epidemic level across this nation, including in Oregon," my comment. Let us lead with sensible, common sense firearm safety laws here in Oregon and Deschutes County. I am opposed to this ordinance. If the commission still believes that this ordinance should be considered, put it on the ballot, and let's vote on it in the next election. Thank you for your consideration. And that's all I have to say."
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amber Hasek, and then Carolyn Skidmore.
Thank you, guys, for hearing us. My name is Amber Hasek, and as Commissioner Dare pointed out, I am a mother, or, well, she didn't point that out, I'm a mother. As she pointed out, a lot of us are worried about dropping our children off at school every morning. What scares me more is sending my husband to work every day. We already have a, we have gun laws in this state, and unfortunately, our county isn't even following through with all of them. The last two deaths that have occurred should not have occurred in our county. The red flag laws should have been upheld in both of those situations. A mental health therapist had contacted the sheriff's department, letting them know that her client fired her, and that he had weapons in the house, and she was afraid he was going to kill somebody. Red flag laws should have been enacted within 24 hours. That did not happen. This person went on to kill a date that he had 48 hours later. Few days later, we have another murder. We had paramedics in that house the night before, and they were threatened with that gun from that same person, and they called in the sheriff's department, and the red flag laws were not adhered to. That puts additional lives at risk. I send my husband, who is a firefighter, to work every day, worrying whether or not he's going to come home. Six months ago, Springfield, same thing, red flag laws should have been enacted. A man set a fire just to draw firemen into the neighborhood and then pursued it to shoot at the engine. The engine had multiple, multiple bullet wounds to it, and luckily, nobody was injured in that point. I send my husband to work every day, worried about whether or not he's going to come home, because we need to tie, we need to work on the laws that already exist, not reduce them. I send my child to school, worried about whether or not he's going to come home. Deschutes County has a suicide issue. We have one of the highest youth suicide rates in our state, and our state is 11th in the nation. Stanford just did a study and released a study showing that gun owners who are not locking up their guns, there is a 26.83% more chance of a child committing suicide by gun. We already have a problem. We don't need to lax the rules. We need to follow the ones that are already in existence. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you very much. Carolyn, or Caroline Skidmore, and then Jared Robison.
Good afternoon. I'm Caroline Skidmore, and I'm here today as a private citizen, a business owner, and, most importantly, as a parent. Last week, when I watched the video of your meeting and heard about the Second Amendment Sanctuary Ordinance idea, I became incredibly concerned. We all here today, all of us here who are speaking, we all strongly believe in the Second Amendment. We support our Constitution, but we know that our Second Amendment is not unlimited. We need to protect all our citizens, and we need to protect them from the gun violence in this country. If we choose to essentially ignore the laws of our state and our federal government, then we're putting every single citizen at risk. Like someone else stated here today, we have the constitutional right to the pursuit of life, liberty, and happiness. When counties decide they are not going to enforce gun laws, it puts me, my family, my friends, and all citizens at risk. We need to really seriously look at what this ordinance would do, not only for the safety of our community, but also for our tax dollars. Our tax dollars, if this passes, our tax dollars are going to be put to use in fighting This is something that I feel really strongly about. I feel that if we choose to ignore laws that our state passes, where does this stop? What other laws are we going to choose to ignore in this county? So I urge you today to please not pass the ordinance, the Second Amendment Sanctuary Ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Jared Robison, and then Nancy Beaver. Okay, thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Jared Robison. I'm the one that proposed the Second Amendment Sanctuary Ordinance. And honestly, I came here today to formally request that we be put on, or I be put on the agenda for hopefully February 20th to discuss this matter. I figured that'd give you guys more time to, for your legal team to go over things and get more input from the community, which I'm glad to hear. I was going to say a few other things, but there's been a few things that were brought up here that I wanted to discuss as well. There's quite a few things that are misinterpreted by what's been going on, and someone brought up extremists, militias and stuff. Yes, we have been backed by different groups. I am actually a member of Oregon Three Percent. I'm the lead of the area. We are not extremists. We're not anti-government. We are not radicals. If I was anti-government, I wouldn't be proposing these things. I wouldn't be voting. Public resources, someone brought up, it's going to be a waste of public resources. SB 501 is on the plate right now in Salem. That will take away county resources from everything. They have, they're proposing gun bans on 95% of the firearms that we own, limits on ammunition, limits on ammunition that we can buy per month. I'm not asking to destroy all the laws that we have in place. We have over 20,000 laws in place across the United States, and most of this gun violence that we see happening is happening in gun-free zones. We need to let the people understand that right here in the Constitution, we have the right to bear arms. And the Constitution of Oregon even states it more clearly: "The people shall have the right to bear arms in defense of themselves and the state." It's a huge matter right now. Yes, there's violence everywhere. Red flag laws, I don't agree with, because that is not giving a person the right to defend themselves. That's hearsay. Someone can say something, and you have their rights taken away from them just because of hearsay. There should be a process that this works. Took a few more notes here. Someone brought up sheriff's liability. That's why I have also been pushing the Second Amendment Preservation Ordinance. Someone brought up that it has failed, and the citizens have rejected it. This is not true. It's still actually in the process. Just in the last three days, I've collected over 900 signatures from the Deschutes County citizens in the last three days to, they're in approval of the Second Amendment Preservation Ordinance. My goal here is to hopefully have the Second Amendment Sanctuary Ordinance at least be placed on the ballot for the citizens to vote on. And if that's the case, I have no problem taking the Second Amendment Preservation Ordinance off the table. But citizens have the right to vote on how they should be able to defend themselves. Few more notes here. Well, I guess I'm up, but, like I said, the main objective of me showing up here today was to see if I could be placed on the agenda for February 20th. If that's possible, that'd be great. Get some more people in here to discuss this issue and give you guys more time to go over it yourselves.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. I have one question, clarification. I'm a little bit confused, because we've got an email saying that what you presented now was what you were trying to put on the ballot. Those are different, right?
Absolutely.
And I haven't sat them down side by side, but I just wanted to make sure.
The difference between the two with the Second Amendment Preservation Ordinance is given the power to the sheriff to determine what's constitutional and what's not, which is not how our government works. It's putting legislative branch and executive branch together, and that's not how we work. In this case, the Second Amendment Sanctuary Ordinance leaves the sheriff completely out of it.
Okay. That's what, I just was trying to clarify. At this point, just so you know, we'll discuss probably at a work session if we're going to put it on agenda when, and then that would be publicly, you'd be notified of that, so...
I appreciate your time.
Appreciate the request.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Beaver, and then Ron Forster.
Hi.
Good morning.
Good morning. So my name is Nancy Beaver, and I'm a resident of Bend, Oregon. I'm here to share my concerns about Jared Robison's Second Amendment Sanctuary Ordinance that he submitted at the January 23, 2019, Deschutes County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. I'm here as a member of the Steering Committee for the Central Oregon Women's March. Our mission is to end gender-based violence, and this proposed ordinance would undo the common sense gun safety legislation that has been passed here in Oregon. A report by the Violence Policy Center states that nine American women are shot and killed each week by their husbands or intimate partners. Gun safety is a health issue for American women, who are 16 times more likely to be shot and killed with a gun than women in other high-income countries, according to a report in the American Journal of Medicine by Grinchton and Hemmway. We should be sending a message to the women of Deschutes County that their safety is a top priority. I urge you to deny passage of this ordinance and to uphold the laws of Oregon and our federal government. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Ron Forster, and then, looks like David Brock.
My name is Ron Forster. I'm a resident of Bend, and I will say right up front that I'm a bit appalled that I'm here and that we're spending the time that we're spending even having this discussion. I'm not here to talk about gun control or Second Amendment rights. I'm here to talk about rule of law and the pledge that we all just took to the flag and as citizens and as commissioners, our job and role in this, in our society, if it's to function at all, is to follow the law, and if we don't like the laws, to change the laws. So I'm here to remind the commissioners that we live in a society that is predicated on laws that should be followed for the common good and should be enforced by every agency that has enforcement responsibilities. So the fact that you're even having this discussion is very, very disappointing to me, because it suggests that you don't understand the role... me because it suggests that you don't understand the role of the county in the state of Oregon to enforce federal and state laws, and if you do believe that there's something unconstitutional about any of those laws, that you have the right as individuals to pursue your legislative leaders through writing and lobbying, et cetera, or under a worst-case scenario, to use your legal resources as a county to challenge these so-called illegal laws and go through the proper process that was set up in this country to give us a society where we can feel somewhat safe and be somewhat organized. So to me, your role should have been and should be to summarily dismiss such consideration because it's not your role to choose not to enforce state laws or federal laws. There are rules in place where you can pursue, and all of us can pursue, to change those laws if we feel that they're unfair or unconstitutional. So I encourage you to stop this discussion, to make it clear to anybody else that comes forward with any proposals to ignore state or federal laws. Just as an example, an automobile can be considered as a weapon. Many people die every year because of that weapon on our highways, so we enforced, we put together laws that says you have to have a license to drive a car, and you have to follow certain rules if you are driving a car. If we as a society choose to put rules in place to protect its citizens from other weapons, those rules should be enforced. There should be no question about it. There should be no debate about it. It's just automatic. It's your role, and when you do the pledge of allegiance to the flag, you're pledging that you will follow your role as a citizen in our society and do the right thing. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. David Brock, and then Rose Archer. Looks like we've got about five more, so thank you.
Well, first of all, yeah, I am David Brock from Redmond. I'm a retired Christian minister. I grew up on ranch and farms where we hunted, had guns for hunting, rifles, et cetera. But I've also been a resident of large cities in the U.S., in Latin America, and Africa, so I've seen the other side of gun use. First of all, I'd just say thank you for your service to the citizens of our county, and I'm also grateful for venues in which people with different points of view can express themselves publicly and be honored for that. I appreciate that very much. Not a right that people in many countries have. And what I'm, what I'm trying to do is to understand both our rights, but also our responsibilities. And to me, this ordinance demands individual rights, but doesn't focus very much on responsibility. And so I do support the right to bear arms, but I also claim our right for safety in our schools, in our homes, in our communities. And I'll try not to repeat a lot of the things that have been shared this morning, but just in a larger context, 40,000 people die in our nation because of gunfire every year. That's 25 times greater to die by gun homicide than in any other developing nation. About 10 people died from gunfire in Japan last year, 10, compared to 40,000 here. And with reference to our own state, particularly around suicide, on a personal note, my great nephew from Sisters has attended two funerals of his high school classmates. He's now at the Oregon State University this past year, both suicide by gunfire. Nearly 1,700 children and teens die by gun homicide every year. For children under the age of 13, these gun homicides most frequently occur in the home and are often connected to domestic or family violence. Four out of every five gun deaths in Oregon are by suicide. More than half of those suicides in Oregon are by firearm. The firearm suicide rate in Oregon has increased 12% over the last decade. That means one person a day commits suicide with a gun here in Oregon. Access to a gun increases the risk of death by suicide by three times. Gun suicides are concentrated in states with high rates of gun ownership, and Oregon is one of the highest. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
So Rose Archer, and then Linda Johnson.
Hello, my name is Rose Archer, and I just want to point out that as an advanced species, we have evolved over many, many years. And in 1885, when the automobile came out, we had no speed limits. We had no need for driver's licenses. 30 years later, they finally enacted speed limits. They were 12 miles an hour because the car could go about 15. And we have continually looked at what we need to be safe as technologies have advanced, and we do this for every single thing in our world, and yet we now have a proposal to take something that takes lives, and we want to roll back and say we're going to have no protections in place to keep us safe. And it just is shocking to me that we're even having this conversation, like truly, absolutely, abhorrently shocking. And his proposal to wipe it all away just shows the extreme nature of it. It's not even a conversation worth having if we can't have a conversation that is about being realistic. And to say that he believes that there should be no ordinance over it, no governing rules, that no background checks, no nothing, that a person who is confirmed bipolar, that is a confirmed criminal, that has confirmed domestic violence against people should be allowed to walk in and buy a gun as much as they want, a semi-automatic with accessories to make it a fully automatic is like, it's insane. It is, it's another insane person wanting rights for other insane people, is the way I see it. And I'm here to passionately say this is not even a conversation worth spending all of our time having.
Thank you, Rose.
Linda Johnson, and then Eileen Grover.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Linda Johnson, and I'm speaking to you today on my own personal behalf. I've devoted my life as a 21-year resident of Deschutes County and a current county resident to the same passion that you're committed to, which is to create safe and healthy communities. I know there's, Commissioners, you take that very seriously, as I have. I also want to thank prior speakers for articulating a part of what I was going to say, but I'm not going to say now, particularly the increase in harm and the reduction of safety that this broad recommendation for consideration presents in terms of domestic violence. I've served on the Saving Grace Board, served on the United Way Board with Tom many years ago, and each, what you're considering today really is an anathema to safety of children in schools, women and men in their home, youth that, or adults who are mentally unfit or mentally unstable at the moment, or who have been a clear and current danger and yet still possess firearms. I want to talk about something that hasn't been addressed today as it relates to the county commission and the county. One of the things I really appreciate about living in central Oregon is the deep sense of collaboration that we have between city, county, school districts, public health system, and all of those systems. As someone mentioned before, the gun laws in this state and country are incredibly complex, and each of those agencies builds a set of rules and operating agreements so that they can collaborate together. As broadly as this, or, I'm going to call it an ordinance, it's not exactly an ordinance. As broadly as this is written, it really strikes at the core of police jurisdictional collaboration. If the county decides that the county police force will no longer enforce gun laws, puts the burden on the other cities and municipalities to do that. It also puts the burden on schools to be alone. If there's a school in county property where a third grader brings a gun to school for show and tell, when we know this is a violation, the parents aren't providing proper supervision, will the county police and law enforcement back up the school leadership in that school? So as I look at the broadness of what could be repealed, it frightens me, and it, to me, it strikes a dagger at the heart of the trust and inter-jurisdictional collaboration that we have. In terms of investigation, a core piece of police investigation is to be able, if it's, if it's a violent act where a gun is involved, who owns the gun? Can we count on gun registration? If we're not doing that basic minimum, it really makes it more difficult for law enforcement to do their jobs. So I go back to your commitment to health and safety and to recognize that as broad as this thing is, it is, it's a death blow to health and safety in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
So Eileen Grover and Nunzi Gould.
Good morning, and thank you for letting us speak today. My name's Eileen Grover. I'm from Bend. I'm a Bend native. I'm a parent, and I'm a children's grief counselor in the Deschutes County area. And I'm just in opposition of this gun ordinance, just stating that I think the states and our nation are finally coming to more common gun sense laws that are going to help protect our children, our families, the people of our country, of our county, and that this ordinance that's being proposed really does take away some of those steps that we've started going towards to keep safety and to keep responsible gun ownership coming forward and something that everyone needs to be taking account of, of their own guns, their own rights, and their own responsibilities of having a weapon, something that can be very destructive. So I'm just very much in opposition of what is being proposed, and I do think that it takes us a step back on providing more common sense gun laws and safety that we are finally taking steps for to protect everybody in this county. So I really do appreciate your time and that you just really think strongly about what this ordinance means and kind of what it steps back to the safety of our people. Thank you.
Thanks, Eileen.
Last one's Nunzi Gould, unless anyone else wants to speak. There's blue forms over here, and just turn them into Sharon there. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nunzi Gould. I'm a Deschutes County resident. I want to thank Commissioner Henderson for coming to Tumalo for the ODOT Highway 20 Community Gathering Meeting. There were not enough comment forums that ODOT brought, and there were not enough pages to sign in as attendees, so I think both Deschutes County and ODOT were not prepared for the community participation. Many members of the community have been involved in this topic over the years and were looking forward to safety improvements that have been long needed. The numbers of accidents in our community exceed the numbers that ODOT presented on the overhead map. And so being current with where accidents are, I think, is very important. There is the ability for modeling, and I highly recommend that monies be put towards modeling, especially where other streets, such as Fifth Street, are proposed to be closed, and cul-de-sacs are proposed to be designed within the community, so that sends additional traffic to streets where today you may not actually see that on counters. We're looking forward to Commissioner Adair being our local liaison. Thank you. When ODOT designed the Parkway in Bend, it kind of shined on a lot of citizen input, and citizen input are the people who maneuver and navigate our roads. They have a lot of input. They don't have degrees behind their names, but they can let you know that a certain design doesn't get you where you want to go. And more currently, you'll know that ODOT is considering closing off this access right here, Hawthorne. Hawthorne's critical to the investment that was made in this building and the circulation to Bend's West Side. So it's important, in my opinion, that a horizon longer than 20 years be included in your design plan, and the reason for that is that by the time your infrastructure is designed and right-of-way purchased, your 20 years might already be up. And so the cost of building something should be thought of in the construct of investment in your community, so you don't build something that then becomes obsolete or dysfunctional moving forward. And these are comments that relate to infrastructure improvements in the county, like at Terribon or Tumalo. The community is bringing you important information that needs to be heard. The other thing is, ODOT's mission is just ODOT's road, and it's important for counties to understand that the rest of the community, the county community, needs to be served, honored, and respected for the investments and the community and the rural nature of community. And there is a thing called grade-separated roundabout that provides community circulation with through infrastructure traffic, and I highly encourage you to look at that model. I think that is something that has much greater longevity than a roundabout. And so we're looking forward to the next go-around with the stakeholders, and thank you again for advocating for our local rural connectivity. Thanks.
Thanks, Nancy.
And we'll note that Commissioner Adair was there last night also, and she'll be serving on the Advisory Committee for Tumalo. Thank you. We actually have another request to speak from Carrie McKinnon. I think this is the last one, so.
Hi. Thank you. I am really loathe to be here, but it is my responsibility to show up today. I am the face of people who have lost someone to gun violence. August 26, 1990, my brother was shot dead on a street corner by two young men with very long histories of criminal behavior who were being monitored by the police. They were able to obtain firearms because they could, because it was that easy. I have, over the last 24, 48 hours, been reliving the phone call that I received on August 27 at 3:00 a.m. in the morning from my sister, screaming, screaming, screaming that my brother was dead, over and over and over again. It is nearly 30 years later, and he is still dead because that's how it works. There's no redo. There is no going back and changing that reality. I lived in Idaho, and I sat on my front porch, big sky land, there's no trees. Why people don't plant trees there, I don't know. But I was on property across the road from me, five-acre to 20-acre properties. They could see me, I could see them, as clearly as I see you here. I sat on my front porch to have a neighbor shooting his guns at my house so close, I could hear the bullets sing as they went past me. I called the Sheriff's Department. My children play in my front yard. My children played behind the house where these bullets were flying. I called the Sheriff's Department, and they told me, "I'm sorry, you live in the county, and we can't help you." And I said, "My, my children play here. This guy's shooting bullets at my house. And I don't know if you have ever had bullets flying at you, so close that you could hear them sing?" It is disconcerting. What I know, and what I knew then, from my own personal experience, guns kill people, and people with guns kill people. And when I called that sheriff, he said to me, "Well, you know what? You go have a talk with your neighbor. But you leave. If you feel threatened in any way, shape, or form, if you even have an inkling that you aren't safe, you leave." I said, "I'm on my front porch." I said, "I'm on my front porch, and I got this guy shooting bullets at me. I feel threatened. My children, my family are threatened. Sorry, we can't help you." I live off of Reed Market Road, where some years ago, while my son was going to Bend High, a young couple drove a truck into a 15, 16-year-old boy. Was not through malicious intent. They were texting. That boy is dead, and there is no redo. There is no changing that situation. This ordinance is ignorant and reckless. It is as ignorant and reckless as suggesting that we should abolish traffic laws because it impedes my right to own a vehicle and operate that vehicle. This is not about a Second Amendment right. This is a public safety issue. And this is challenging my right to safety. To think that these kinds of tragedies cannot happen here in Bend is wrong. What stays with me, like my sister screaming on the phone, was reading the newspaper in the next day or so to find out what the last minutes of my brother's life was like. To see his name written in an article, to see my name, my name, in the newspaper, and to realize all these stories that I've read, all these articles that I read that I'd say, "Oh, what a shame, what a tragedy." These are real people. This happens to real people. They're not just stories that happened somewhere else. Sandy Hook, Parkland, all that can happen right here. And I'm here as the face of that. What I learned, I understand that. What I learned from that newspaper article is that my brother was reaching for something to use as a weapon when he was shot twice in the heart and three times in the ass as he fell to the ground. He was reaching for something to defend himself. If he had had a gun, it would not have saved him. But if the young man that had shot him had had background checks, if there had been real gun registration laws, there's a possibility he could still be alive today. It is your job. I understand that. I understand that. But I need to tell you that it is your job as commissioners to put public safety first. This is not a Second Amendment issue. It is a public safety issue. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that is all the public comment we've, has been asked for today. Appreciate all of you coming today. Like we said, if this comes up as a topic on our agenda, discuss further this ordinance or some other ordinance related to this, it'll be on the agenda. We do get your emails. Even if we don't respond to all of them, we get quite a few emails, so it's hard to respond to all of them, but I can assure you that the three commissioners do read them all. Some of your names I recognized from emails earlier. So, thank you very much. We're going to go on to the rest of our agenda today. Take a minute here if you want to leave and reorganize. Thank you. You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for saying that I was there last night.
Yeah, you're welcome.
She just didn't say anything.
She didn't say, I told her, I actually saw her.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking.
Thank you. After the meeting, I told her you'd been there, but she, yeah, she didn't know. She has an interesting idea, actually.
Yeah, I know.
Roundabouts.
Well, it's like, I was like thinking about going and like, like walking it or whatever and like trying to see what they were talking about. They were going to change the access to the restaurant. I was looking at it all differently today when I drove through, 45 miles an hour. Yeah. Yeah, like people are going like, "How is this going to turn, and how's it going to turn?"
Oh.
Okay, what a morning. Okay.
So let's see, we're moving on to the consent agenda. Do you have anything you want to take off, or?
I don't think so.
Do you want any discussion on anything?
No, everything looked okay.
So what I'll do is I'll just motion approve the consent agenda, and then I'll second it.
Okay, I'll make.
We'll go ahead and proceed with the rest of the business meetings this morning. First, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Commissioner Adair, do you have a motion to support that?
I would like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as listed on our master agenda.
Okay, and I'll second that. Any further discussion?
No.
So Commissioner Adair, your vote?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing on text amendment to DCC 16.105 regarding access requirements to subdivisions, and Peter Russell will join us.
Morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Now the mouse doesn't want to wake up.
Go for me?
It's for you.
Should I start from the top?
Please.
Okay. So I've been handed the kind of procedural way we deal with a hearing. This is a legislative hearing, and so this is the time and place set for a hearing on Staff will outline the hearing procedures that we followed.
Greetings. Peter Russell, senior transportation planner for Deschutes County. The way we're going to do this, the hearing's body is the Board of County Commissioners. We'll take testimony and receive written evidence concerning 247-18-000872-T-A. The applicant, Deschutes County, is requesting approval of the text amendment to Deschutes County Code 1716105 regarding access requirements to subdivisions. All testimony shall be erected to the hearing's body. At the conclusion of this hearing, the hearing's body will deliberate toward a decision or continue the hearing or deliberations to a date and time certain. Hearing proceeds as follows. Staff will provide a brief report. Applicant presents its testimony and evidence. In this case, staff and applicant are one and the same. Opponents and proponents will present their testimony and evidence. Any other interested persons will then present testimony or evidence. The applicant, as the party bearing the burden of proof, will then be afforded an opportunity to present rebuttal. If requested by the hearing's body, staff will provide closing comments. Full written version of the hearing procedures available is table on the side of the room here. Also, some handouts. Okay, commissioners, must disclose any prior hearing observations, biases, conflicts, or conflicts of interest. So back to the chair.
Does any commissioner have anything to disclose? And if so, please state the nature of the same and whether you can proceed.
I can proceed.
And the chair has no prior observations, other than we did discuss this in a work session, but have no other biases or conflicts.
Okay, does any party wish to challenge any commissioner or members of this hearing body based on biases or conflicts? Okay, so seeing none.
Well, I'll open the hearing and ask that staff proceed with the staff report, and then I guess roll into being the applicant as well.
Yes.
Thank you.
So again, just in the Department of Redundancy Department, here's a slide giving the overview of the process that we just explained. The reason we're here is that Deschutes County, where we review land use applications, we have a current code at 1716105, which requires roads that access subdivisions be built to county standard and be accepted by maintenance by a unit of local or state government, according to our code. In 2006 and 2009, the board set moratoriums on accepting new roads into the county maintained system, which puts it a little bit of a conflict with 1716105. I'll explain how we've done it in the past. Previous steps in this process, we held a planning commission with the work, we held a planning commission with the work session. There's a great sentence. "We held a work session with the planning commission on November 29th. Then they held a public hearing on December 13th. Planning commission recommended unanimously. The board approved the text amendment as proposed. The board held a work session, as the chair mentioned earlier, on the 23rd of this month," which brings us to this hearing. I apologize for the wall of text, but just so we understand, what we're all looking at is this is the current text, which is, "No proposed subdivision shall be approved unless it would be accessed by roads constructed to county standards and by roads accepted for maintenance responsibility by a unit of local or state government. This standard is met if the subdivision would have direct access to an improved collector or arterial, or in cases where the subdivision has no direct access to such a collector or arterial, by demonstrating that the road accessing the subdivision from a collector or arterial meets relevant county standards and has been accepted for maintenance purposes." So this kind of is a diagram what we're talking about. The light blue is a subdivision, so assume that's your subdivision plat, those little black lines are, you know, roads serving it. So you can see they go directly to this well-drawn county-maintained arterial or collector. So that's what direct access means. Conversely, here's indirect access. So we still have our subdivision with that light blue box around it and its streets, and you can see the red road that's providing access comes all the way down to the county-maintained arterial collectors. So that's the one that this text amendment would be dealing with specifically, that example with the indirect access. So working with the road department, who have requested this text amendment, this text I have before you underlined is proposed new language in the code, and then if you see strike through, that's what we're eliminating. So we also did a little reformatting. So 1716105A would talk about public roads with maintenance responsibility accepted by a unit of local or state government. For private roads, it'd be maintenance responsibility assigned to landowners or homeowners association by covenant agreement pursuant to RS 105.175, which is a part of the state statute that deals with easements, their repair, and their cost sharing. So essentially, what this text amendment is doing is if you have a road that isn't county-maintained, we want to make sure that people who use that road will still have, you know, a road that meets county standards, and that's because it'll be operated and maintained by either a special road district, a homeowners' association, some sort of binding CCR with the property owners. So the idea is that as you're driving on it, you won't be able to tell the difference between a county-maintained road and a non-county-maintained road providing access to this subdivision. And then C just kind of wraps it up at the end there and talks about maintenance responsibility for the roads that's been assigned as required by this section. So that's the intent. So what we have done in the past, since the moratorium in the planning division, is we've essentially, in our conditions of approval, cited a different part of the code, 1716040, that essentially says, you've got a homeowners' association or a special road district or some other entity that's agreed to maintenance of the road. So this just codifies it, what our past planning practice has been to do. And then this also assures we're in, consistent with the board moratorium, accepting new roads into the system of county-maintained roads, and then we worked with the road department to get this explicit language. So next steps, the board, after you hear your public testimony, you can continue the hearing to a date certain. You can close the oral record and leave the written record open to a date certain. You can close both oral and written record instead of date certain to deliberate, or you can close the oral and written record and begin deliberations today. So that's all at your discretion. So happy to answer. Any questions?
Commissioner Adair, any questions?
I had none.
Okay. And the only question I had is, when I go back to the original provision, there's the second sentence that says this standard is met at the subdivision, we have direct access to an improved collector or arterial. Is that now, so the substitution now is, so it's that second one, the direct access clause, is now the combination of the kind of the preface clause and A? Do those make, I mean, you've taken out the word "direct access," it looks like, but those cover that, right?
Yeah, by the time you've got A and C to get, so C pretty much is that first clause you were talking about. If you had a C, it's that, that language has been moved down to C now. It's just been taken out, but it has the exact same language, just in a different location.
So A really kind of buttresses C in terms of explaining, okay.
Yes.
All right, I don't have any other questions. Thanks.
And do you want any of these diagrams up, or are you okay with?
They're good. I like the fact that you did the drawings. That was, it's always helpful to try and translate the words onto a map.
You can see why I do not have a career as a draftsman, however.
Well, you've got to start, so. Okay, so I guess I'd open the hearing now to any testimony, I guess, in opposition to this change, if there's any. What's that?
Your support then.
Oh, support first, okay. I thought you were the support, so.
I'm the applicant.
Okay, so.
It's confusing.
So anyway, so I don't have any requests to speak at this. If you are interested in speaking, we need to get a blue form, but if you have something to say, you can come up and fill out the blue form afterwards. But is there anyone in support of this text amendment today? I don't, oh, yep. Maybe you can fill out a form after you're done, so, good.
Hi, my name's Nunzi Gould. I appreciate the need to tighten up this language. I do think moving forward, the moratorium means that we really don't have a management of what that quality of maintenance is moving forward, because this ordinance doesn't specify what the maintenance standard will be. It just says to be maintained by an HOA or private landowners. And if you go down existing privately maintained streets in our community, even those put in for subdivisions a long time ago, they're public streets, privately maintained, it's pretty horrific. And to me, that's livability. And so the question is, what is that standard that the county is expecting? Can a fire truck get past the potholes? Those kind of simple things. And I think it does beg the issue of pedestrian accessibility, ADA accessibility, that's not really been mentioned. So I think there needs to be an actual standard that matches Deschutes County's road standards. I don't see why, as we develop new subdivisions, we should be taking lesser maintenance standards, because I think that degrades livability in our community. So if the county doesn't want the financial burden of paying for these maintenances on public streets, I do believe the county should have a standard for what that looks like, and I can't tell you what that is. But I think moving forward, we need orderly development, and typically, HOA fees, people like to have less. They don't want to pay that, and they don't want to put money in reserve funds, and that means even a road that might even start, say, as asphalt, might end up with the four-inch or five-inch wide cracks and just have the tar drizzled on them and never really be kept to a standard. So that, what our community looks like in 50 or 100 years, that's where I'm coming from today. And I think a standard equal to county's public maintained standards, even adding something that vague, would be a guideline and would be an improvement. Thank you.
Can you put your, say your name for the record, also?
Nunzi Gould, 19845 JW Brown Road, Deschutes County.
Okay, and then if you'll fill out a blue form. Peter, do you want to give me a comment with regard to that? Or, I don't know, is there anyone else? Well, first, is there anyone else that wants to testify on this matter? Seeing none, Peter, maybe you could respond to that issue of a maintenance standard. I don't actually know what's been considered in the past.
So the road department has policies of how often they maintain roads. They have a pavement condition index that they use in our county road standards for private roads. We do have construction.
We do have construction standards about, you know, depth of pavement, depth of subgrade, things like that.
For private?
For private roads as well. We have, what we don't have are standards for how you maintain it. That's more of a policy decision in terms of ADA and PEDs. You don't have that along county roads. That's more when you have intersections. So when we have our unincorporated communities, if something's developing in there, like in Atumla or Terabon, where there's crossings, ADA would come into, you know, play. But if you're talking about a through segment that's going through the countryside, you know, if you're going up, say, Johnson Market Road, or if you're going out to Deschutes Market Road, if you're going out, you know, Alfalfa Market, you don't have ADA or PED because there's no ADA or PEDs out there. It's just a through segment.
I think specifically, she was kind of asking about, with regard to privately maintain roads, the HOAs and things, is there any standards in our code?
Not that I know of. I can check with Chris Doty and Cody Smith from the road department about when it's formed, if there's something in the formation papers about how often you will maintain it and to what level, and do they do pavement condition index, or do they do some sort of, you know, normal cycle of routine maintenance and operations? But I don't have the direct answer for that, and I'll have to get back to you on it.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Dyer, do you have any questions or thoughts here for anyone else?
No, it would be interesting to find out. How, you know, how bad are the subdivision roads? You know, just because they did have to put them to a certain standard. So that, you know, that's an interesting question.
And again, the text amendment, just so we're all clear, only applies to new roads coming in, so it's not retroactive. So we have approved subdivisions in private roads, they're not affected by this.
So with regard to just this specific text amendment, is there, so we have options now to either, a lot of times we'll put things off and deliberate later. We could wait till Commissioner DeBones back. We don't have a proxy for him, but, or we could go forward. What's your pleasure at this point, Mr. Dyer?
I honestly think we should have Tony vote on the issue also.
Okay. Is that a problem, or?
Yes, sir.
Can we put off deliberations to a further meeting then?
The only thing you need to do is ask if anyone's here to testify in opposition, and then you can close the oral record.
Why didn't he did that? Okay.
I was taking notes. You can close the oral and written record and set a date for deliberations.
Okay. Is there anyone here to testify in opposition to this text amendment? Okay? Then I would entertain a motion to close the oral part of this hearing, right?
I moved to close the oral part of this hearing, and also, can I add it?
Leave the written record open, or close it also as an option, right?
No, well, we can leave, could we leave it open?
Yes, you have the discretion. If, again, people are watching online, now they may suddenly have an interest, so you can leave, you can close the oral record, and you can leave the written record open for whatever date you prefer, you know, a week, two weeks, and then you can set a date for deliberations sometime after that for the same date.
So a lot of times in hearings, we do have a week, leave the written record open for a week, and then there's a chance for rebuttal after that? Is that the, would that be?
It's legislative, so you could leave it open for just a set period for anything anybody wants to say about anything. There's no right to rebuttal necessarily in a legislative amendment, and this is the second public hearing, so there is no requirement to hold the record open. You could close the record today as well and simply deliberate in a week or two when Commissioner DeBones back. There was an earlier public hearing at the.
At the planning commission? So my thoughts, we leave it open for a week, and then we'll close the written record at that time, and then deliberate after that. Does that sound amenable to you?
Yes.
Okay. So, do I need a motion to do that?
Which is direct staff.
Okay, direct staff.
What's the date? I'm trying to find a calendar.
The day's the.
The third is?
Next week's going to be.
The sixth.
Okay.
So the written record closes at 5:00 PM on the sixth, is that how that would be?
Yes, and then, and then, do you want to set a date for deliberations?
We can, yeah. Sharon, do you want to suggest a date for deliberations? The following Wednesday, maybe?
The thirteenth?
I'm not here on the thirteenth. That's the only reason I was bringing it up.
Well, how about the following Monday, then, after the thirteenth?
That's the holiday.
How about the twentieth? All right. So.
Okay, so the written record, oral records close today, the written records close 5:00 PM on February sixth, and deliberations are on February twentieth.
Okay.
Do you need anything else from staff?
What's that?
Anything else from staff?
Do we need anything else from staff?
Contact Chris and Cody.
We're good for now, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You too.
I would just say that, I mean, I think Commissioner Dyer had asked, you know, with regard to the maintenance standard, it'd be interesting to have some background on that, maybe that being in the written record, I don't know.
We'll get something.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is a deliberations on the Wave Seer Marijuana Production Appeal, twenty-four three fifty and twenty-four three sixty Dodds Road, and joined by Matthew Martin, Adam Smith, to lead us on that.
Do you want me to start?
Brief introduction. Matthew Martin, Deschutes County Planning Division, as Chair Henderson acknowledged what's before you today is deliberations on an appeal of approved marijuana production proposed by Wave Seer Incorporated. Public hearing was held December nineteenth of two thousand eighteen. Following oral testimony, open record period was established by the board for a submittal of new information rebuttal, and then final arguments by the applicant. Those time periods have concluded, and during those time periods, several summits were provided by both the applicant and the appellant. Acknowledging that Commissioner Dyer didn't participate in the public hearing as a seated commissioner, I do want to acknowledge a procedural component to that, so pass it to Adam Smith, legal counsel.
Adam Smith, Assistant Legal Counsel. Just to address the procedural issue very quickly, so we can move on. Staff's understanding, I had a conversation with Commissioner Dyer this morning, that her intention is to, of course, participate in these meetings, that she's reviewed all the record materials and was in the audience during the past public hearing, and that, of course, she's fully prepared for proceeding with the deliberations and participating in this matter, and she, of course, can be fair and impartial. I just wanted to put that on the record, and of course, ask Commissioner Dyer to confirm as much.
I confirm.
And as we typically do, as we just did in the past public hearing, we ask if there's any objections, you know, any objections for challenge or bias, and since Commissioner Dyer was not participating during the public hearing, I think it would be appropriate, Commissioner Henderson, to open it up and ask if there's any objections to Commissioner Dyer participating.
Okay. Is there any objections to Commissioner Dyer participating in this deliberations and decision? We have none?
Just, thank you. Just wanted to put those quick things on the record for you guys.
Thank you, Adam. In, so, staff has provided the entirety of the record to the board that is before you for consideration. The post-public hearing open record period summits were provided to the board at a work session last Wednesday, as well as a decision matrix prepared by staff, that staff utilized that testimony and identified the appeal issues, and summarized testimony in opposition and support, provided some staff comments, as well as board decision points, in an effort to assist the board in their decision-making process. I want to acknowledge that the table, the issue area matrix, is categorized by issues raised, those that staff has identified as directed at applicable review criteria, under the green header and labeled identified appeal issues. The second, colorized and yellow, are associated issues that are directed at procedural or comprehensive plan policies, but staff didn't identify as applicable review criteria in this matter. And then lastly, under the red heading or other issues, are issues that were raised in testimony, but staff has identified as not directed at any related or applicable review criteria. With that, I will pause for any questions or any direction by the board to assist in your deliberations.
So, thanks, Matthew. So, you know, you've kind of broken it out between the green, yellow, and red. I wonder if it'd be appropriate to deal with the yellow first, because those are kind of big picture things. The modification of the application, just if we want, if there was a feeling among us that this was a modification, and we didn't, somehow it was unfair to a party, that would, in a way, would preempt the meat of the thing, unless we want to rule on that, and the same with, I guess, the bigger picture on issue seven. I'm just throwing this out there. Commissioner Dyer, I'm interested in your input also, and then it seems like the red is stuff that, is most of those issues are things that are not specific really to our ordinance, which is what has been our practice in hearing these matters, but is, but they are things we've heard about previously as commissioners, et cetera. So, just my thought, what's your thought about that, about going yellow, green, and red in that order?
Sure. That's fine with me.
Matt, do you have any thoughts on that, or?
I'm at your disposal, so happy to assist in any way I can.
Couple other things that I think we're going to have to decide, is Commissioner DeBones isn't here today, and obviously has a right to be involved in deliberations. We've got a tight schedule in terms of finishing deliberations to get a final order done, so that's, I guess, something else we're going to have to discuss. I don't know if we should discuss it before or after, whether we're going to keep open deliberations, or, you know, what, he didn't really give us directions that he doesn't want to be involved, but he didn't give us directions. A lot of times, we will seek, you know, all three commission members' input. Dave, I'm kind of looking at you about the timing and.
The date's pretty soon. I know we're real tight. If you were to either begin today and continue it, or just continue it altogether, I don't know where that fits in with the timing. I know it's mighty tight.
Yeah. The current one hundred and fifty-day deadline for a final county decision is February twenty-fourth. So approximately.
So, so that gives us some time. I mean, if we had to continue it over to next week to a deliberation, it could, we could roll with that, and then, and we could still get an order out, it seems like. I mean, we've done more complicated decisions faster. It's, I know it causes hardship, but.
Yeah, it'll condense it on the back end in terms of a potential work session and rewrites and edits, but.
We've got the thirteenth would be the following week. If we got things more or less resolved next week, we could maybe get to the thirteenth, and then it'd be time for, okay. All right. So with all that guidance, clear as mud. Let me deal with number six first. This was the issue of modification, the application. It was, my take was it was a little bit different than some of the ones we've had, in the fact that there was kind of a mention of, it was changed significantly during the process, and that the original opponents were actually responding to the original application, and there was some issue whether they had fair amount of time to respond to the new application. Do you have any thoughts on that, Mr. Dyer?
Actually, I attended the hearing on the eighteenth of December in the audience, and per my notes, Mr. Rosen testified at one fifteen, I believe, on the video, that the system would only be using thirty thousand gallons of water a year. And if you go back and look at the original water plan that they submitted, they said they would be using COID water from April first through October thirty-first, and that was going to be two hundred and forty-six four hundred gallons for that eight months. That was their estimate. And then for November first to March thirty-first, they were going to be having hauled-in water with a hundred, using a hundred and fifty-four thousand gallons. So I thought that was kind of unusual at the time. I had it in my notes, and then I just had someone reconfirm that fact. And then also, they did, I don't know if you want to talk about the ionization, that's what he had suggested that day. His testimony was about the ionization plan that they were going to use to handle their order, but that's actually listed somewhere else on this sheet, I believe.
So, so the specific question here is, did you think that was a modification and?
It was definitely a difference of usage. I mean, I know we're not talking about water, but that's something that he did say at that time that is significantly different from his original application.
So I'm looking over to the right here, and staff comment, it says, "Planning director shall have sole authority to determine whether an applicant's submittal constitutes a modification till the day a hearing is open for receipt of oral testimony." And then there's a sentence, "No changes or modification to the proposal have been made by the applicant since the hearing was opened." So is that, can somebody in CDD address that? Because it did seem like what we heard was different than what was in the application. We've had testimony before that seems different, but I don't know what would actually result in a modification or.
I understand the code to basically say that if there's a claim that anything was a modification, that, and the underlying action or alleged change occurred before you opened your public hearing, before you folks, that that's solely for your planning director to make that decision, and it's not, board doesn't have jurisdiction on that, that you have jurisdiction once you open the hearing to determine if anything brought forward new at that point constitutes a modification. That's how we've, I think, code's always been interpreted as such.
Okay, so if, so given what Commissioner Dyer said, that new testimony came in at the hearing that was different than the original application as determined right before we started, is that somehow affect our ability to decide this, or, I think that's what you're saying, right?
Well, yes. I mean, it was just something that was significantly different from the application.
Yeah, but if that connects with something that occurred prior to the hearing, and it's just an elaboration or addressing that, it wouldn't have been the modification occurring at the time of your hearing.
Well, it didn't, I think that's her point, that it didn't connect. It was different than what had been said in the application. So he's testifying about difference.
On a different point? Was it a new point? Was a new modified issue?
It was on the water and the water source, and then I think about the ionization.
I think water is a general issue was on the table since probably the beginning.
So you're saying that.
But I see Adam sitting up, maybe he has something he wants to add.
When this issue's come up before, the code contemplates, well, the code contemplates that if there is a modification that has occurred after the start of the public hearing, if the board so determines that there was in fact a modification, then the board ignores the additional evidence or the change that has been presented in use, since they go back to the application that was submitted prior to the modification. What we have done in the past, though, is provide an applicant the opportunity at that time to submit the appropriate modification of application form, and to pay the appropriate fee, and at times that resets the clock for the public hearing, they have to additionally toll the clock. So it's, if the board is determining that a modification did occur, then those are the two options we have for how to proceed.
And I guess I felt like that's what the appellants were saying, was this is changing or has changed, and I'm just, I don't know what that's, how we test that, or what standard we, you know, uphold it to. I mean, further here, that it says that under DC C twenty-two twenty zero five five D, further specifies determination whether an applicant's submittal constitutes modification shall be appealable only to Luba, and then shall be appealable only after a final decision is entered by the county in application. So it sounds like that could be raised at Luba, that this issue of modification, if, but not, I'm not quite sure if that says we can't rule it, or.
Well, that's relevant, I think, to Dave's earlier point on, when did that modification occur? If the applicant submitted new information that constitutes a modification, and that new information was received prior to the start of the public hearing. new information was received prior to the start of the public hearing, then that's CDD's decision on whether or not a modification occurred. And if they decided it did not occur, then that decision is not appealable until Luba. If the decision is that a modification occurred after the start of the public hearing, then that's the domain of the county commissioners to then make that call whether or not the change rises to the level of a formal modification.
So, what should we do at this point? I mean, there's, I think we're, I think what Commissioner Dare's saying, and I, it seems consistent with my memory of it, that it, it, there was difference in what was testified about than what the application had. I guess to me, is, is the question, is it kind of, is it material or prejudicial, or does it affect?
I don't think the time lock is the date of the application until your public hearing.
Oh, I know.
If anything happened from the date of the application until your hearing happened, there's an issue in play, then, then whether that's a modification or not was planning's decision.
I know, but I'm saying we're past that. We're at the next stage. The hearing starts, and the testimony is different than this, than what had come in during the long period. So, it's, we're out of the planning director's hands, so to speak. So, I'm not saying that that means we should stop anything. I'm just raising it. It was, it seemed like that's what the, was raised by the appellant, and...
Yeah, at that point, you're deciding as the board whether that is a change or a modification, or whether that's just some fine-tuning and finessing of what's already out there.
Yeah, and I, I mean, here's one way you'd look at it, as well, water was discussed in the application, water's discussed now. Another thing that came up was the size of the grow, the, what was the third one you mentioned? Oh, the ionization.
The ionization system.
The system was, it was brand-new at the hearing, or was it?
I'm, I thought that was something different from the original application, the ionization that they submitted.
The original odor control system did include ionization system.
It did.
The, the testimony provided during the, the oral testimony, additional open records period, further supplemented the, the record associated with that system, but from staff's perspective, the same technology as described is, is the same.
Just more fleshed out or more a change of the, okay.
Commissioners, we have a definition of modification that's formally adopted in the code. It's at the bottom, as Matt just pointed out, of the matrix. And I think it's probably relevant to deciding, my understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, sources have always been consistent, but there's some dispute on whether or not the amounts have changed.
Right. I'm not disputing Commissioner Dare's comments on the, what was described in oral testimony versus what may be included in the, the formal written record of the, the project. But I do want to acknowledge that the same sources, COID irrigation waters, as well as bend water hauling waters, are proposed to be used to provide the, the, to satisfy the, the water-related requirement for marijuana production in that certificates of water rights are secured and pertinent to the subject property, as well as a statement from the water supplier that they, they are, in essence, willing and able to provide that water during the off-irrigation season.
Okay.
So, the applicable part of the definition, I'm not reading, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but starting midway through, you know, "It's a change that would modify development proposal by changing one or more of the following previously described components, proposed uses, operating characteristics, intensity scale, site layout, including but not limited to changes in setback, access points, building design, size or orientation, parking, traffic, or pedestrian circulation plans, or landscaping." And I think this last phrase is likely key, "in a manner that requires the application of new criteria to the proposal or that would require the findings of fact to be changed." So, I think it's that last phrase that really needs to guide the decision on whether or not the change in the amount of water, not the source of water, you know, is requiring an application of new criteria to the proposal or that would require the findings of fact to be changed.
So, I guess my feeling is that, having heard what they said, that there, there may have been changes in the specifics of what they're proposing, but I guess I use the word material, or whether they're really were material in the, how they affected it, I don't, I don't know that. I, I guess I wouldn't think they were significant enough that I couldn't rule on it for other reasons. I'm not saying I'm right, I'm just saying that's how I feel. And, or they might be called de minimis changes, or, I don't know. I guess I'm looking, you know, I don't know, the, the rest of it was prejudiced in terms of being unable to be, for us to fairly decide. And it's, so that's my thought at this point. Do you have any other thoughts or comments?
No, I just thought it was, it was just something that I picked up, and I thought it was significant. You know, you, you want people, when they're applying for a marijuana grow, to be truthful, and when you say what you're going to do, you should be consistent.
Well, this has, you know, it has been something we've had somewhat of a problem with, with other ones where they kind of evolve over time, and it's, I think, people that are commenting or appealing and aren't quite sure what's being proposed, and I do, I do think it's something to keep in mind. I, so this would be something, I guess, that we, if Commissioner, if we leave the deliberations open, Commissioner DeBonne might want to weigh in on. Do you feel that's correct, or?
Yes.
Okay. So, issue seven is several sections of the comprehensive plan that were cited, kind of, I think, going to the issue of, like, what I call bigger issues of, you know, protection of resource lands, need to protect farmlands. I think this has been a bigger discussion we've had about, some of the grows have let their farms go fallow, you know, weeds grow up, et cetera, on what's typically been farmland. I'm sympathetic with that issue. I don't, it hasn't historically been what we've denied or approved or a marijuana production facility. We've looked really more specifically at the ordinance relating to marijuana production. I'm, I appreciate what's been said in the comprehensive plan and I, with the people that are saying that, but what's your thought on that?
I realize it's, you know, it's a dilemma for the opposing people in this issue because it is their neighborhood, but as, you know, as staff said, it's not applicable.
Yeah, that was the staff's comment. So, unless we're gonna challenge, I guess, land use law generally about, or something, I sense that would be an appealable issue if we ruled on this decision on that. So, it sounds like you'd agree we won't.
Right.
We wouldn't deny it on that basis.
No, I don't think you can.
Okay. Did you have any other comments on that, or did we kind of summarize what you, staff had concluded?
Correct, yeah. Just to echo Commissioner Dare, the comprehensive plan is set forth as the, the policy document that guides land use in Deschutes County on a broader policy level, whereas the Title 18 county zoning ordinance is the codification of the policies that are within the comprehensive plan.
Okay, okay. So, let's, we'll go to issue one, then, the applicability of the airport safety combining zone. This was the issue that part of the property that was being developed is, is in a, I don't know what you call it, a, like a, I don't know what you call that, zone that goes out over the, by the circle at the north end of the property that's, and...
It's, it's not applicable there, per the staff, that we are not in the AS zone on this property.
So, that's what staff had concluded, we're not in the AS zone. There's a specific map that shows what the AS zone is. To interpret differently, we'd, we'd be expanding, I guess, that, so I would agree with that, so. The next issue is two, is separation from youth activity center. This was raised with regard to a couple of different property owners, the ones directly to the east of this property, the subject property, which testified they had 4-H activities for youth, and then directly south on Williamson Ranch Road, property owners testified they had youth-oriented equestrian and homeschooling activities occurring on the property. And there's a separation distance in our code for, that allows, that provides that you can't have production facilities within, or a property within 1,000 feet of, I think, schools and daycares, and that we have the specific wording of a youth activity center. So, so the question is, does, they put here, the decision point, do the identified uses constitute a youth activity center? So, getting your thoughts on that?
Okay. I actually looked at the pictures. I heard the testimony of Jared and Tricia Wright, who have had 25 years of riding experience. They homeschool and they do equestrian youth activities. They submitted pictures where, I believe it was around 12 youth were on, mounted on horses with their helmets on. It definitely looked like they were totally engaged in their testimony, what they were saying, and I drove out just to get a view of the property, and yes, there, the Rhinestone Ranch is right across the street from the 100-acre property. So, I, I know there's different comments about their permit for their youth activity, but it is on agricultural land, and it does appear, and per their testimony, that they are seriously engaged in working with the youth of Deschutes County.
So, my thought was, you know, this was, we've discussed this in a couple other applications, and I'd found previously in a decision that a fairly active 4-H participation in a facility next door to a, a proposed marijuana production facility was youth activity. This was the one part of our ordinance that really wasn't defined. Efforts have been made to say, well, it has to be permitted, or it has to be something specifically called a youth activity center, but there really isn't anything called a youth activity center. And, and so the language has to do with, I guess, to me, a more literal interpretation of, it's a place where youth are active and it's centered there. I, I kind of have kind of a common sense view of that. I have a lot of concern with the effect of marijuana use and marijuana industry with regard to youth, specifically, and I think a lot of people in our county feel that, and a lot of neighbors in properties like this do. We haven't ever found that just having a house with children next door is that, but these, I, I agree with you that there, these were more significant activities than that, and as that is in our code, I would find this, actually both activities being the Rhinestone Ranch and the 4-H being things that would constitute youth activity. So, there would be the 1,000-foot restriction on production. And I guess I don't know if there's, if there's been any measurement of that, or, but those that were adjacent properties, I guess, so. So, that's basically two of us that would agree with that, so.
It is right across the road, and you can go to their website, rhinestonranch.com, and, you know, see exactly what they are offering the youth. And, you know, it doesn't, it didn't have to be just children, but their photographs actually were a lot of children in all their pictures.
So, if the board is constituting the two of you, and you are determining that in fact that use qualifies as a youth activity center, that too low would be sufficient to deny the application at that point. There's no need to go further on the additional criteria that are listed, and then whether you're gonna wanna withhold on making a final determination until another meeting when Commissioner DeBonne may be here. Those are issues you're gonna, for you to decide right now.
Good, good point. I wonder if we should go ahead and be, you know, be heard on the other decisions, because if there was, you're gonna die on one, but you get to die on more than one. If it got appealed, that, that you wouldn't want to deny on one issue, comes back and said, oh, by the way, we thought the noise wasn't, was also, or should we do it in part?
Yeah, that's a clue that gets to those other ones, but certainly, yeah.
I mean, yeah, I mean, they'd get to, I just wonder, shouldn't it be smart to at least...
You could continue on.
Discuss it today, and if we, if we agree, then that would be additional. If we disagree, then that'd be, we'd have a one, a one-plank decision, I guess. Is that your recommendation?
It's, it's really a policy decision for the board on how you want to proceed with that. I mean, if you get to this particular issue which you have, and it sounds that, that there is consensus among the two of you that it does qualify as a youth activity center, that in and of itself would, you know, kills this application and denies the, the application and approves the appeal.
I guess my thought was that because youth activities has been vague or subject to interpretation, if we had another reason, I guess I kind of want to talk about the odor control issue and see what Commissioner Dare's feelings are about that. And we have three other issues that were listed, and I, maybe we could get at least tentative positions on that. Is that...
Oh, certainly.
Would you like to do that, or would you like to just have it rest on one?
No, I, I think we could talk about the odor control.
Okay.
The staff comment was, there was no alternative report. It was with the original. And according to some of the research I've done on ionization plans, there's serious issues. They aren't effective, according to documentation that we've received from like 2015. And they actually, in a really perfect world, they, they rarely work. And there's also serious health complications from using that plan, and it's risky for the people that have that ionization plan. I have some documentation on that.
So, you're saying it's risky to the people that work?
Right, the people that work in it. So, it's, you know, and then the doubts are, does it really work? That's the other thing.
Yeah.
So, I don't know. What did staff think?
In review of the applicable review criteria, we're looking at if an alternative system is, is proposed, well, in short, it shall be, the building shall be equipped with an effective odor control system which must, must at all times prevent unreasonable interference of neighbors' use and enjoyment of property. It's deemed permitted after the applicant submits a report by a mechanical engineer licensed in the state of Oregon that demonstrates the control will be effective, in short. I'm looking at the submittals by the applicant provided by a mechanical engineer licensed in the state of Oregon that it tests to the effectiveness of the, of the system.
But there was also the submittals by the appellant, and I think in rebuttal period was some additional information, I guess calling to question the effectiveness of the ionization system and, and then also discussing, I think, the pollution, basically, that it causes. Did you have any comments on that, or did you review those?
Reviewed them, but not being an expert in odor control, that's what led my comment to, to stating that, yes, there's additional testimony in the record, but not a, a report submitted by a mechanical engineer refuting the, the testimony submitted by the applicant.
So, you know, I think that's one of the weaknesses of our decision-making system on this scientific part of this, and it's, as we mature in reviewing applications, we really, in more sophisticated industries, you actually, we would have a staff person that would, was an expert on this. That's what they do in, in big industrial plants, or that kind of thing they have. There's people that are, when those are permitted for gas and oil and things, they're, it's, I, I reviewed the information that was presented about being questionable, whether it works. The standard we've used in the past has been what you've said, Matt, which is, well, if an engineer presents it, and it, and we've been sticklers about what is it and how's it work, and, and that sort of thing. We have approved it. I'm concerned that it won't actually work. I, part of what always gives us, causes it's gonna work, is they tell us they're not gonna let any of the air out, which I always think's hard to believe, but, or that they're self-contained or they're, you know, it's gonna be so filtered. So, there is this testing... So there is this testing system we have of inspections, annual inspections, so that we would be able to see if it was, it's really not, does it smell in the building? It's whether it smells outside the building at the neighbor's property. So I have questions about it work, but I have the same question about whether fogging systems work and whether ultra-viruses, I mean, we've had several presented. I guess I felt like it met our standard, but I'm really skeptical about whether it's going to work, given what I've read, that it's, so that's kind of where I am today. Any thoughts on that, or?
Well, it is a 36,000 square foot building. They have, they could actually have up to, I believe, 40,000 square feet of plant in it, per the size of the lot, the 100 acres. So they were only, their initial application is for just 10,000 square feet of marijuana. Right, of mature plants. So, you know, it's, it is, it's a, you know, it's a big piece of property, but that's a lot of, you know, that's a lot of marijuana that you're going to, you know, want to maintain that in your, in your building. So it's, yeah, I, you know, the, the research I've done on ionization isn't, it's not that good of a system, but, you know, if someone said that it was, I, you know, I think the fact that we have, you know, we will be inspecting is a good idea, or the neighbors actually could anonymously complain. So, you know, we have wind in central Oregon. It blows things one way or another. So, you know, we'll, you know, definitely, if the odor isn't controlled, we'll hear about it.
So if we were going to vote today, would you vote that it's not sufficient proof that the odor control standard in the ordinance met, or would you vote that it is sufficient proof?
Well, they had a, they had an engineer sign it and that's a dilemma. You know, do you, do you go with your research where you, you know, it's been documented that really carbon filters are the best for controlling odor. They're expensive, but they are the best. So, you know, I, I don't know. I'm caught both ways. I, you know, it seems like, okay, so what they've done, they followed our rules.
It was interesting, though, they did, the engineer, it seemed like, did criticize carbon fuel filters, if I'm not mistaken, that they said this was better. Isn't that correct? They, they said this was better than carbon, because we've had a lot more carbon filter systems suggested, and they were touting, you know, this is better than that. Was there anything specifically that was submitted by the appellant's that you thought pointed at how ineffective it might be? They had a variety of things, particularly about the pollution aspect, the ozone, or, and then things that, this hasn't come up before with me. David, there's, in terms of independent research by a commissioner to learn about something, is that something that can be shared with me, or is that something that's outside the record, or what's?
Is this something staff has generated?
Your, your research.
Staff is able to assist the decision-maker and, you know, provide additional research and, and provide opinions and whatnot to, to the decision-makers. If it's coming from, say, one of the parties, you know, that would be, would need to be part of the process and with an opportunity.
I think, is it things that someone gave you, or is it information that you developed?
Right, somebody gave me, somebody that's an expert.
In the context of this particular application?
Right. Well, regarding the ionization, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Yeah, the ionization, yes.
Is that, is that documentation or information in the record?
No, it was just my research. My personal research.
Independent on that?
Yes.
I mean, I think that's probably a gray enough area that, you know, you're certainly allowed to bring general knowledge to bear. If this is just some general knowledge you've acquired on ionization in general, you're not asked to necessarily, you know, not rely on that. That's, you bring that baggage kind of with you whenever you hear anything.
Okay.
You know, as-
Well, I brought that, for instance, the ones where they were going to have 44 heat, heat pumps. I said, that's going to cause some noise. I don't know the decimal of it, so, so you can share what your, so what were the comments, or what are the, what's your research say that, about the ionization? Because I didn't do any independent, I saw what was in this, the appellant's.
No, it just said, for this research, it was that ozone generators are associated with health, indoor air pollution, adverse health effects, et cetera. And in order to be effective in Colorado, you had to use carbon filters, you know, for odors.
So ionization's not allowed in Colorado, is that what?
No, I didn't actually say that, but this was from NSW Government Health, and it just said that ozone, you know, those are just some of the things. This article's from 15. But, yeah, I, you know, I can give it to you.
Okay. This is something we could put off. I could look at, I have the same skepticism about it, but I don't have the scientific knowledge.
There's those.
There's a, there's a fine line that, that decision-makers walk between just general knowledge and information, educating yourself and acquiring information that's outside the record, that parties to the proceeding don't have the ability to refute or to try to qualify or explain. So that's always the gray area.
You haven't had this before, so I don't, so this is something we could put off, tell Commissioner DeBones here. What was the-
Also an issue the board could choose not to address.
At this time? Yeah.
At least at this point, I don't know that you've made a formal vote, but it sure sounds informally, that there's a 2-0 to deny the application based on the proximity to youth activity, so.
You're saying based on the Commissioner Derr's positions, one, mine's uncertain, and it's like, well, you could just decide to go forward and not address it today? Okay.
Certainly not required to address it if, if I'm reading the tea leaves correctly from the earlier issue on the youth activity.
Okay. Staff, was there anything that, in the response by the applicant to the comments by the appellant on odor, on the ionization? Because they really, you thought dealt with the other, I mean, they put more stuff in, in their last, they called it rebuttal, but it was really not argument, it was really, I think, more stuff. And I don't know if that's appropriate, but.
You know, that's a fine line, too. We, we see objections a lot where people claim that information in a rebuttal period was actually new evidence. You know, typically, we've interpreted that, and I think most Luba decisions have interpreted that in the few Court of Appeal decisions, to, to really be substance, something completely new that was not in any direct or indirect way on the radar or been brought up as a, as a issue or a, a matter of information. So that's a pretty strict standard, I think, to, to cross, to, to be in violation of bringing up new information during-
Maybe, yeah, maybe it was just-
During a rebuttal period.
They did just argue about it in the, I guess the final document is the January 15th email. Is that right?
Correct.
So I guess for today, you know, I'm comfortable not deciding that issue today. It has, it did comply with what we've seen in the past in terms of the required standard. I do think going forward, and this is something to note for the community development, that we, I mean, this issue of what, which of these work is really important to us, because, and maybe through our inspections process, we'll find something out, but it, we don't have the scientific, we don't have the scientists, we don't maintain any, but we need to figure that out if we're going to really doing our job to make the odor control systems work, so, okay. Do you want to just, well, the other two issues were noise and utility verification.
Right.
The noise analysis, the criticism was, from the appellant was, the noise analysis does not account for the specific equipment operation needed. And then the applicant said, well, they, they did submit that, it was prepared by a mechanical and acoustic engineer. So, did you feel it didn't meet the standard of-
No. The opposition didn't submit anything in regards to that reference, and staff had already approved it, I believe. So, and then staff actually went back to, the opponent had said, it's not a will-serve letter, but according to our staff's analysis, Central Electric Cooperative is willing. So I think that was the point that wasn't justified.
So, yeah, I, I agreed with both of those, that I felt that the noise, information submitted was sufficient to meet the ordinance, and I felt that the, having done varieties with these will-serve letters and what's supposed to be in them, I, I think once Central Electric says they're willing to serve it, they then come back later and say, you know, if they have to upgrade, they come back and, you can't really get the service until it's done, but they're pretty willing to, it seems like they've been willing to serve most of those facilities, once they've indicated the, in the letter, so. So those were the main, so I don't, the, the other thing going into the five, or the red ones, there's, oh, there's more than five. Those would be ones I wouldn't probably think it would be worth commenting on for a decision, in terms of if we've made a decision based on the youth activity center, because these are really, I guess I would characterize them as ones we haven't really used, and when we're evaluating these kinds of applications in the past, and so it'd be new territory, unless, do you have anything you want to say about any of those specifically?
No, I, I understand their comments, but it's not applicable for our review process. So, you know, I, I can empathize with what they're saying, but it's not relevant.
Okay. And I feel the same way. They raise a lot of points that are, we've discussed and debated about what we should be supervising, or what should be the rules, et cetera, but they, they don't really represent the current ordinance as it's, as it's written, so, okay.
Can I just point a clarification, just to go back briefly to the issue number four and five, noise? What I heard from the commissioners, that both of you, and please correct me if I'm wrong, feel that the proposal met the criteria associated with noise control.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
And secondly, with utility verification.
Right.
Thank you.
Though I did hear they're having blackouts in Creek County from the, can you believe that? There's not enough, well, because Facebook is using so much power. They're having blackouts in water rationing, is what I was told. So, yeah.
We, you know, we've heard, we have had some evidence in, not in this hearing, but others, about the stress that grows and put on the electric grid in turn, or the, particularly with blown, what are they called?
Transformers?
What are they?
Transformers?
Transformers, yeah, and things like that. It seems like, at this point, the electrical utilities continue to supply the power, so. Okay. So I guess the question would be is whether we keep it open?
Yeah, I think there's two issues. One, was this preliminary deliberations, or were these something more substantial than that? And if they were something more substantial, I believe Nick wants to get a point of clarification for some pending applications right now.
Thank you, Dave. Nick Lee-Lectus, Deschutes County Community Development Director, for the record. Yes, the youth activity center vote is extremely important, because we have at least one decision ready to go out later this week that really hinges on the board's interpretation of the youth activity center. So if, if the board is, is, if that vote is final, for lack of a better term, then that'll affect, that'll impact that, that decision, and then we have other applications pending that may have similar issues, and we want to be sure to work with those applicants immediately, given the board's interpretation. So just, while the whole decision may not be final and permanent with the vote, we just, we don't want to be incorrectly interpreting the code with pending applications.
Yeah, okay. Well, I think in terms of finality, I, I think I've decided that I think they do qualify as youth activity center, and it's, and I believe Commissioner Dare felt that, too, so.
Me, too.
So if we continue to deliberate on anything else, I don't think that's going to change, from my perspective. Commissioner Dare?
No.
Okay. So.
So then, is it your preference to, to treat these as preliminary deliberations and have a second round of deliberations with Commissioner DeBones? Or are you prepared to formally deny the application at this point, based on the 2-0 position on the youth activity center? I think that's for the board's call at this point.
For me, generally, it's good to have three commissioners. I, you know, Commissioner DeBones hasn't specifically asked, you know, and I know there's been more decisions, deliberations, they, the commissioners have done before when I wasn't at a meeting and they left it open. But we, we also have a timeline, so I don't know, you know, I don't know what his, his will is on that. I always feel like if a commissioner wants to be heard, they should, and, or, and he might want to discuss. One of the, one of the issues is that if we have further deliberations, it looks like I'm not going to be here next Monday and Wednesday, so I wouldn't be present for next week's deliberations. So they could still continue between Commissioner Dare and Commissioner DeBones, but, so that's a whole nother.
Comes a little bit of an issue, too, because you're mixing up who's, who's available. You know, you certainly could take final action today, treat these as your single deliberations, you know, have a call, question on a vote, whether to approve or deny the application, and, and direct staff to prepare the appropriate findings. We could, we could go that way as well, and Commissioner DeBones was aware there were deliberations today and certainly could have phoned in and been available that way, I believe, if, if necessary, and, and, so it's-
I would be available to phone in next week, you know, to comment on an order or whatever we need to do, so I'm not unreachable, so.
Adam Smith, Assistant Legal Counsel. I do think this is one, following our typical process, that we would give the, the prevailing party the opportunity to propose findings. And so just when we're working through the, the timeline, I think we should keep that in mind, that we would like to, as we typically do, provide the opponents the opportunity to propose something to county staff, and that usually takes about a week.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm fine making a decision today.
I'm fine.
So.
Okay, so then I guess the, would be best for staff would be if there would be a motion to deny or approve the application, and if it's to, to deny it, if you could articulate the, the basis, which I believe is the youth activity issue.
Okay.
How do you make that motion?
So I make the motion to deny this application. Do I need to cite the number? Land Use Files Number 247-18-000127-AD/477-LR-877-LL/899-A, on the, the fact that there is a youth activity center within the thousand feet of the operation.
Is that what you're, okay. And I'll second that. Any further discussion?
No.
And the chair has no further discussion, so Commissioner Dare, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Okay. And the chair votes yes.
So what staff will do is we'll make sure that the, the findings and decision indicate that the application's been denied, that it's been denied on the basis of your findings on the youth activity center, that in addition to that, you did address the, the noise and utility verification issue, and was a 2-0 vote, that in fact they met those criteria, and that you did not reach a final decision on odor control? Would that be appropriate?
That would be appropriate.
That'd be fine. Yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
We need to do more research on that, the odor control.
Yeah. So.
Thank you.
Anything else on this? Anything else on this matter? Okay, we're done. So, I believe we have one more matter that we need for executive session. So, we're going to go upstairs to finish, finish that. So, thank you all for coming today.
So, then the regular session is adjourned and we're going to convene upstairs for executive sessions?
Yeah, so the reg, yeah, the regular session is adjourned, we'll meet upstairs for executive session. Yeah. Yeah. Well, there. 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 Well, there.